We have to wait until the next people start then. There's only those who remain, seek on this panel and also try to business, um, descend. So maybe if she doesn't go, we just do all.
Yeah. May as far as.
Yeah. I think we can adopt a security after next month or the month after. And that's going to get a little tricky now because there's some new members. And I may take the time to call in a lot individually to wait to know if it will solve. Security, um, and it's a subdivision, Margins Farm Road. Um, and so that will be a all different way of approaching things. I know you know, you sat on information before, because Sam, he also, like Sarah, I have to know. Um, because it's a first I like.
Call us individually for what?
For the public hearings procedure.
Oh, yeah, I don't think for.
Yeah, yes. William was part of public hearings. I'm not sure if Paul was ever part of public hearings.
Uh, yeah, I'm too much.
Yeah, so I think Paul, you've got affirmation comes through, do you like to know how to receive? Uh, and those are expert communication or allowing them to speak generally.
It's not a little pressure. Uh, we get to use like, uh, it's like annoying you guys to my body.
I'm like around the, uh, you think we're good, we're good trading.
What? You guys already?
Good evening, I'm Brian O'Connor, Chairman of the Planning Commission. It's Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, six P M. I'm calling this meeting to order. I will now call on the following elected members to speak up as present. Paul Aurelia.
Present.
William Boyd.
Present.
Sarah Graham.
Present.
Alec Piccola.
Present.
We also would like to welcome our Town Planner, Suss Smith Etata, and Aileen Marsh, our Recording Secretary. I'd like to remind everyone that we have no public hearing items for review tonight. This is, this, uh, excuse me, the public is free to listen but may speak only at the invitation of the Chair. If any of the members wish to discuss any item on the agenda, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Please identify yourself by name and title each time you would like to speak. The first item on the published administrative agenda is, uh, the approval of the regular meeting minutes for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion to approve these minutes?
Uh, Ms. Graham would like to make a motion to approve the March fifteenth meeting minutes.
Paul Aurelia, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Next item on the agenda is the Zoning Commission referral. This is a text amendment on section fifteen point eight, manufacturer of spirits and craft cafe permit. Uh, the zoning commission is looking for the planning commission's recommendation to make the text amendment on section fifteen point eight, the manufacturer of spirits and craft cafe permit. Uh, first, I'd like to open this, just open, uh, this to discussion. Can I get a motion to open this for discussion?
Ms. Graham, I'd like to make a motion to open this for discussion.
Paul Aurelia, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, uh, if you don't mind, Suss Smith, uh, if you can open up the discussion and just give us a background on, um, this zoning commission referral and fifteen point eight.
Sure. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, as you have probably read in the staff report, uh, this proposal is for the Two Roads Brewing Company, company located at seventeen hundred Stratford Avenue. And, um, it's an existing thriving business. Uh, they would like to just, uh, seek these, um, permits so they can manufacture their own liquor on site and sell them. Uh, for that reason, um, they would have to apply for these two permits, which is manufacturer of spirits and Connecticut craft cafe permit. Um, there is no expansion of physically to the structure. So it's all going to be inside the building like it always used to be. And, um, uh, you know, the surrounding uses are all, you know, retail commercial, uh, uses nearby. Um, with very, uh, limited possibility to impact any residential, uh, neighbors. And, um, this is also, uh, you know, located in a C A M A zone. It's split into two zones, but the, uh, based on our zoning regulations, the bigger, uh, zone, uh, whichever is, uh, having the greater boundary, uh, you know, that zone standards apply for that particular property. And in this case, it's the M A zone, which is the light industrial zone. Um, so it is an allowed permitted use in that zone. Uh, and based on, um, our P O C D guidance, um, you know, it would help us to, in the future, um, guide any future proposals for manufacture and sale in the same manner. So helps us in simplifying our zoning code and, um, helps, uh, retain the existing business. Uh, because in the absence of this, we are not sure if the, uh, business would be interested in, you know, uh, continuing to be there or would like to go somewhere else. So, uh, it's an effort to keep our existing businesses, um, in the zone where they are located and assist them in their, uh, expansion.
Excuse me, thank you. Uh, any questions for Suss Smith regarding this topic?
Yes, William Boyd's own too. Uh, with the permit, they're manufacturing spirits. So does that require any kind of different ventilation than they, they were used to make? I guess they only make beer. So does it require any other kinds of other site preparation to do that?
I'm not sure, that's a building department question. It's a building code question. Uh, but I know that, um, this is not the final decision. Like, once the commission, uh, approves it, it goes to the zoning commission, they will, uh, approve of it. And if they do, uh, then it has to be ultimately approved by the state. And, um, you know, if there is any, um, if they're expanding in any way internally, they would need the necessary building permits and that's when the building code applies.
So as a planning commission, we're only worried about the exterior and what's being done on that property. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just going along with what, you know, both of you guys talked about, uh, from a planning perspective, exactly right. They're not building on anything. Um, and again, the zoning commission is looking for, you know, a referral from us, uh, whether, um, for or against. But, you know, d- does the planning commission, you know, would you recommend moving forward with this fifteen point eight, um, text amendment? Um, to allow this process to begin, really?
I'd like to make a motion, Paul Aurelia, uh, that we forward this to the zoning commission with a positive recommendation, this text amendment.
Thank you.
William Boyd's own it too, I second Paul Aurelia's motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved unanimously. The next, I, uh, item, uh, agenda item is section five. This is a eight dash twenty-four review sent from the town council, um, as a referral to consider an act upon a referral from, uh, town council regarding Beaver Dam Road parcels acquisition. Again, uh, the town council is looking for, uh, recommendation from the planning commission on whether or not the acquisition should move forward. Uh, at first, again, we'd like, like to open this up to a discussion.
Yeah, Paul Aurelia, I will make a motion that we open this up to discussion.
Ms. Graham, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Again, we're going to look to our town planner to, um, touch on this subject, uh, the eight dash twenty-four review. Give us some background.
Sure. So, um, these parcels on Beaver Dam Road, um, are, um, have been, um, the subject of acquisition by the Ca- uh, Conservation Superintendent, who applied for an open space, uh, watershed acquisition grant, um, in an effort to expand open space, uh, in the town. And, um, she not only applied for the Beaver Dam Road parcels, but also for, uh, parcels on Peters Lane and James Farm Road. As you can see in the map that was provided to you in the staff report. Um, those parcels on James Farm Road are, uh, a subject of litigation right now. And for that matter, um, the acquisition, um, cannot be undertaken right now. Uh, and the state deep, who awarded this, um, acquisition grant, advised the town to first proceed with the Beaver Dam Road parcels. Um, these parcels are, um, on the town boundary line with, um, some of the, um, acreage in the Shelton, uh, jurisdiction, Shelton town jurisdiction. So, um, by acquiring these parcels, the town would like to keep them as open space and add it to our existing Roosevelt Forest, uh, acreage. Uh, it is consistent with our P O C D goals and objectives. If you may have read the open space, uh, section of the P O C D, the goal was to actually increase the open space to three hundred, um, let me just say it correctly, but, uh, three hundred additional acres. So this is just a very minute acquisition compared to the magnitude of the goal. Um, it's roughly four acre acquisition right now. And, um, there is, I tried to go take pictures so that I can show you how the site looks like. But when I went there, there was no access. It was all, you know, wooded and there's no way I could have walked. I mean, I would probably, uh, I could walk through there, but, you know, I didn't just go there because of my allergies.
Completely, completely okay. Um, although you are an avid hiker, so maybe you could have gotten through. Um, thank you for the background on that. Does anybody from the commission have any questions for the town planner on this potential acquisition?
Who owns the land now?
They're private owners, um, like there was somebody called Joe Inc., um, some private company. Um, and they own the, uh, land right now.
William Boyd's own two, is there a value?
Joro, I'm sorry, it's Joro Inc.
Is there a va- how much are we buying? Or is it proposal to buy? Is, is, I think it said three acres, was it?
Three point nine.
Three point nine, is there a dollar value to it?
Um, I think it's all funded through the grant.
Okay.
So, and this commission, uh, does not have authority over financial transactions. Uh, and for that sake, that was not included in the paperwork.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, Paul Aurelia, I'd like to make a motion that we forward this to, um, zoning with a, uh, positive recommendation as well.
Anybody have any further discussion or you want a second?
Chairman, whenever you approve this, you have to state for the record the reason for approval.
Sure.
That it's consistent with the P O C D.
Sure. And obviously, we would agree, sorry to interrupt you, but that it is consistent with P O C D. We're adding, um, land that would be connected to Roosevelt Forest for, uh, space recreation, exercise, uh, natural open space, which is tough to come by. So these all would certainly meet the open space and recreation section of the P O C D.
Okay. Um, and this recommendation, Suss Smith, it goes back to the town council or, okay?
Yes.
So I'd like to, uh, amend that motion to, uh, for the reasons cited by you as, uh, compliance with P O C D in addition to town open space, that we make a positive recommendation to the town council on these land acquisitions. Right, consistent with the P O C D, um, along with our goals of obtaining open space, et cetera.
Thank you.
Ms. Graham, zone four, I second that motion.
We're going to put this to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Next item on the agenda is item eight. Um, this is, again, the, we're, no real referral anybody's looking for at this point. We're just, this is more of a, uh, discussion regarding Greenway and Complete Streets Committee and any updates that may have. Um, at this point, I'd like to open this just for discussion. Can I get a motion?
Ms. Graham, I'll open this for, uh, make a motion to open this for discussion.
Anybody second?
I'll second that, Paul Aurelia.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So there was another Greenway Complete Streets Committee meeting. We have the meeting minutes. Um, does, you know, at first, well, Suss Smith, uh, if, if you don't mind, give us an update from your perspective.
Sure, um, I was not present for the meeting that day because I had a personal appointment at the same time. But I heard from Mr. Watson later on that the group discussed, um, you know, briefly the walking routes that they were, uh, planning on, um, developing, both, um, as an, um, ma- as a physical map and an online map. And he also talked to me about the Milford Rotary conducting some event on June seventh, where they would like to, uh, place a kiosk. Um, so Ms. Graham can actually add to that, I guess.
Then you can, Ms. Graham?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I'll expand a little bit about what she mentioned for the maps. Um, we were given physical maps that we are updating and walking and seeing, uh, areas that need to be, like, if sidewalks need to be fixed or roadways or, and sending that to the town to, um, to fix. And then mixing them and, not mixing, but making a digital version of that map as well. So that people can bring it up on their phones if they're walking it or get a physical map. And then what she was talking about was the Main Street Festival on June fourth, um, working with the Rotary Club to have a kiosk for bikes so that people can bike to the festival and have the bike corral be staffed. And then next to that corral would be a Co- Greenway Complete Streets table representing the subcommittee. And so the table needs to be staffed with two people each and the corral as well. So three to four people at that area at one time. And they would like to ask the planning commission for help with that as well. So, um, not sure if we need to discuss that amongst us right now, if, um, but, uh, they'd like to help with that Main Street Festival timing at the corral and the table.
Gotcha. Um, any forward movement on any of the, you know, uh, I read through the meeting minutes. I know that the town is still waiting on D O T approval, um, for phase two.
Correct.
And we're working with, uh, Metro Cog, um, and their staff assisting, uh, an R F P for consultants. Um, any insight on, insight on that or is that?
Those are still just waiting, like you said, waiting on D O T and waiting on Metro Cog, um, for the Greenway Phase Two and Complete Phase One and then Metro Cog for Complete Phase Two, which is why there's not any new update for either of those.
Okay. And then, um, just going back to, the Main Street Festival is June fourth. Um, Stratford Rotary Club's donated space to the, uh, Complete Streets and Greenway and, um, looking for some assistance staffing.
Correct.
Um, we'll take that offline, but we'll certainly be happy to assist in any way we can.
Great.
Um, again, unless anybody has anything else, that, a question or anything, um, there's no need for any type of, uh, motion for, on this topic, it was more of a discussion than an update. Uh, is everybody good at this point? Okay, thank you. Um, now we're moving along to, uh, item nine on the agenda, which is in reference to the Plan of Conservation Development, P O C D update. Um, we're in a detailed scope of the work. So we were all issued, uh, an overview of what to expect from the P O C D. Um, Suss Smith, uh, first, I'll open this up for discussion. Uh, can I get a motion?
Paul Aurelia, I'll make a motion that we open this for discussion.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, all in favor? None opposed. Um, Suss Smith, uh, obviously, as the town planner, you're, you're the most knowledgeable about, um, the P O C D. And if you don't mind, can you give us an overview and update and, uh, where we stand with it?
Sure. So, um, the good news is that we entered into a contract with F H I Studio last week. Mayor signed the agreement and it's all final. And now I, you know, I'm waiting for our finance department to set up the account. The money is already there, but, you know, just arranging P O, uh, the, this, uh, one colleague who is on vacation and I'm waiting for her to return. But in the meantime, I also had a kickoff meeting with the consultant team this morning. It was a virtual phone call, um, just for thirty minutes. But we went through, uh, some of the key items on public outreach, uh, just because of the timing, uh, because we are getting so close to the summer. Um, so here's, um, a few things that we discussed. First is, um, setting up a, a project focus group with the department heads and planning commission chair and vice chair, um, as part of those, um, meetings. And I asked them who should be involved and we got, um, some suggestions like health department director, community services administrator and, um, you know, town planner, P N Z administrator, director of economic department, building official, fire chief, police chief, um, conservation superintendent, um, and the mayor. Um, so I'm going to, you know, put together, um, a group email for everyone, inviting them for a initial, uh, in-person kickoff meeting so everybody can get to know the consultant. And following that, every month, it would be virtual, uh, by, um, uh, Zoom or some other means. So, you know, these will be televised and if planning commission members would like to look at the meeting and understand what has happened at the meeting, you know, you can review the recordings, which I can share with you. Uh, besides that, I think we also have in our scope meetings with, um, advisory committee, uh, you know, focus group is them, but advisory committee is you all, which is the planning commission. And they set aside up to twelve working meetings to develop the P O C D. And then the other thing, um, I ha- I have a confusion in my head, first of all, which I have to clear up, what they mean by, um, stakeholders. And if the advisory committee is just the planning commission or the planning commission members and the department heads, all the members or two members, I have to confirm that with them. Because now that I'm rereading the scope, I have that question in my head. But I'll move on to the next one, which is the events. Uh, and I wanted them to hold the dates and I spoke to Mary Dean and she said Main Face, Main Street Festival is largely attended with ten thousand people. So that should be an event where they can set up a table, uh, to inform people about P O C D process and educate them. And then, um, on June thirteenth, there is an opening day ceremony for the Paradise Green Farmers Market. That's when, um, they should set up a table there. And then there is another event that will happen in July, um, July seventeenth for the Shakespeare, uh, market, which they can attend. So these are the three pop-up events that's, that I said they, you know, should attend in order to, um, you know, get a broader audience interested in the P O C D and the process. And then, um, we also discussed on, um, uh, the materials that need to be shared. They said they will share a common folder with me where I can share all the draft materials, any demographics and, you know, statistics that we have pertaining to recent trends that they can look into. Um, they will be developing a project website shortly, an interactive one, where, um, there'll be an interactive mapping tool. Um, so, I mean, that's all a matter of how soon they can set up the system to work, which will happen sometime next month, I think. Um, the other thing is also the workshops themselves. And we all agreed that, um, summer is not the best time to hold workshops because most people will be on vacations. And even the consultants need some time to get up to speed on, um, learning the community and the issues. Um, so the workshops would be most likely in September when schools begin and everybody resumes work again full-time. But in the meantime, um, sometime in June or July, they will roll out an online survey, um, that residents can take and that will be widely advertised and publicized. We have two promotional videos that the consultant team agreed to prepare on this, um, P O C D. One is an initial kickoff video and one is a video summarizing findings, like what the draft plan has, uh, you know, developed. So I think the initial kickoff video, um, could be timed in such a way that it can be released along with the online survey. So folks view the video and then take the survey. Um, and they, you know, Mary Dean and I were just thinking, maybe it would be best if we, you know, have the mayor release it at one of her events. Uh, if she has any state of the town address or anything like that, you know, you're just coinciding it with an event where, you know, we can publicize it more. So that's going to happen in the next two months and I will be on vacation for a month. I am going to visit India, uh, in June, like from June eighteenth to July eighteenth. So I advise the consultants to take that time to, you know, prepare any trends and statistics, work that can be done without having to meet in person. So that when we, they get back to meeting in person, um, they are more better prepared for this. Um, I think that there's a lot of community engagement that will go on. And I, in the next week or so, I would like to set up a meeting with Mike Downs, um, our communications officer, to see how we can get social media and news coverage on this, uh, P O C D setup and how we can, you know, maybe our I T, uh, manager to, you know, link the project website to the town, uh, planning and zoning main page and, um, set up a focus group team invite for meetings, the first meeting at least before, um, you know, June, before the pop-up events. And if you look at the other elements of the scope from, um, page four onwards, there will be interviews with staff of town boards and commissions at some point in the fall, uh, where the consultants would meet, uh, separately with Greenway and Complete Streets and, uh, you know, waterfront harbor management, historic district commission. We'll have a consultant brainstorming session in the fall where we would invite all the consultants that worked with us or are working with us on the other projects like Greenways, Complete Streets and, um, coastal resiliency to be part of a brainstorming session. And then we also, um, parallelly would be reviewing at the drafts that, um, the team provides us as an update um, to what has been discussed and what was the outcome of the meeting. Uh, and then, um, there will also be up to six stakeholder meetings. And these stakeholders will be, uh, business community, environmentalists, uh, resiliency advocates. Um, so we have to develop a stakeholder list for that. So there's a lot. I mean, it's just getting started and, um, I'm sure there'll be a lot of things that'll come up, um, in the next month or so on, you know, setting all the, um, initial stages, like having the focus group advisory list, having the stakeholder list, having a list of communication channels, um, and having a schedule for when to release what, um, and logistics of time, place, where the workshops should be held, um, so that we capture, um, all residents of the town in those three workshops.
Sounds like a big project. No, that was very informative. That was very informative. Obviously, that's great news that everything's been contracted. We're ready to move forward as of the nineteenth. I know our goal was the fifteenth, so that's, that's very close, and that's awesome. So it sounds like the next step really is getting organized as far as making sure we have the department heads involved. And, you know, I'm sure it's voluntary, so we need some commitment, so I'm sure that, right? Is that correct?
You know, I'm also going to invite a member of Metro Cog to sit on the advisory committee meeting. They routinely sit on towns' P O C D committees, just for the sake that they understand what our issues, our concerns are and convey to the other regional towns at the regional cog meetings. And yes, it will be voluntary, but we're all town employees, and this is a major project for everyone, not just the planning and zoning department. The other thing I wanted to tell you is the timing of this. So our initial kickoff meeting with the focus groups would probably happen in May, eighth week, after the eighth, after that Sunday. And then sometime in June will be pop-up events, and online survey will be released for a period of two to three months. And then sometime in August, we'll be preparing for the workshops. I mean, there's a lot of planning that goes before we go attend a workshop. And maybe at that time, that's a good time to meet with the consultants of other projects to know what concerns or challenges they've been facing. September would be the workshops. October to December, we would probably have meetings with the stakeholders of various topics, and meeting with the various boards and commissions. And then maybe winter, like January to March or April, that's the time, and they will be more like just talking to the advisory committee and working on the draft chapters and any mapping associated with it, and developing recommendations. And then perhaps sometime from March to May would be a review of these drafts and polishing the final draft. Maybe, you know, setting up a meeting sometime in May with the council for referral, because there's a statutory timeframe for sixty-five day review that has to go through before we actually officially adopt the plan. And that gets also officially referred to the planning commission, like a council's eight dash twenty-four review gets referred. But in this case, planning commission must hold a public hearing. So the process of public hearings and on the final draft would be sometime between May and September, depending on the timing. Again, like I said, we are getting into the zone where there'll be summer vacations, so we have to be very cautious how we, you know, hold these meetings. So we have no concerns from the general public saying that they were not available to attend the meetings. And our deadline to adopt is December next year. So I'm hoping if everything goes well, like we have laid out, we should be in a good shape by October to get this adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question for Susmita.
Yes, please.
Yes, as district leaders, as we all are, are we allowed, or do you suggest we have, like, micro-meetings in our districts to show our, you know, neighbors what the plan is as, you know, reaching out to the public?
You can host any meeting with your constituents as a volunteer member. But in terms of the consultant attending the meetings, the budget, if you see the last sheet, shows the number of hours that they would spend on this project, and their hourly billable rate, and how many they can attend. So we can, we are only able to accommodate three workshops in the budget.
Right, not necessarily them having to show up, but like the video and having just basic information, so that they at least see it, and then we direct them to maybe the website for the town. It's just as a point of contact, not necessarily having the...
I strongly encourage that. In the past, when I worked in other communities too, the council members and the planning commission, zoning commission members acted as liaisons. They would reach out to their own constituents. They would have an email set up for the constituents, that, like an email blast. They would share the video and the survey with them, asking them to take the survey, attend the meetings, encouraging them to offer input on the project website. So I think it will be very helpful if you can help spread the word so that we can reach out to as many people in the Stratford community as we can.
Okay, thank you. And just continue, you know, a lot, there's gonna be a lot of platforms, you know, online platforms that, you know, as a liaison, we want as much, you know, involvement from everybody. So it's a good thing to keep pushing people and telling, you know, if you have something to say, you know, go to the platform, your voice is gonna be heard, so absolutely. Anybody else have any questions? I know Susmita gave a big overview, and there's a lot of information, and it's all gonna funnel together as we go. So, you know, deep breaths, it is a big project, but that's why we have consultants to help us out. But do you have any questions for the time being?
One suggestion. So if anybody has any concerns during the process, that there's something, you know, they were not aware of, or something that they would need more information on, please bring them to our attention as soon as possible. It's better to bring them early on, up to speed, than wait till the last minute. Then, you know, it'll blow out of proportion and becomes an organized opposition for something that could have been very well discussed in a meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else, anything else? There are no further items on the agenda, so looking for a motion to close this meeting.
I second a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. So moved, or all in favor? Sorry. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.